All right, thank you everybody for coming. Uh, we will call to order, call to order the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Burton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman? Freeman is absent. McGee? McGee is absent. Mahal? Mahal's absent. Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Seven present.
Okay, if you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Dear Lord, we pray tonight to thank you for our country, our community, our freedom, and we thank you for all the current military service members and the many veterans who have served in the past to represent our freedoms. We thank you for their service, their sacrifice, and we pray that you bless each one of them. We thank you also for our first responders, both police and fire, and our community and throughout this country, and pray for their safety. We ask tonight that you give us compassion, patience, courage, and wisdom as we conduct our city's business here. We ask for these things in Christ's name, amen. Okay, I don't believe we have any public, oops, I don't believe we have any public comment here, uh, this evening. Anybody registered? Thank you. Uh, item four, approval of minutes. We have the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of September sixth, twenty twenty-two, as presented. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Prather. Uh, you guys thought you'd catch me, didn't you? Anyhow, um, is there any discussion regarding that motion at second on the floor? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Uh, we have no public hearing. Item five, under item six, uh, special messages and proclamations, we have Pam Lopez-Fetis with us here this evening from Growth Dimensions. Welcome Pam.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, um, for letting me speak with you today. Um, just a few updates. Um, we had our annual, uh, dinner this, uh, couple of weeks ago, in which Andy Korkamp came, um, he's the V- Vice President for Manufacturing and Engineering with, uh, General Mills, and he did a wonderful presentation. We had about two hundred fifty people in attendance. Um, during that evening, we were able to share some details about year-end, um, activity, um, but one is with, um, I wanted to update you on some of our Enterprise Zone activity, in which we had twenty-nine projects currently, about fourteen businesses. Uh, we have, um, over a hundred eighty-six million in capital investment, about two-hundred-and-ninety jobs as a result. Um, this year, we anticipate our investments will be over two-hundred-and-twenty-five million by the end of the year for Boone County. And these include projects like Project Kelly, uh, Dairy Farmers of America are having a new, a new line, General Mills has a line expansion, um, the Heidner Group, um, with a fuel center, um, Ipsen is doing a reconstruction after their, uh, fire, we have Dairy Queen, Starbucks, Stellantis, um, and, um, many more. Um, so we're also had, uh, been working with our entrepreneurial program, uh, we'll provide you with a year-end report for that, um, following this month, um, when the grant ends. Um, as a result, we were able to translate a lot of our materials into English and Spanish. We were also able to translate and, and develop some videos, like the Enterprise Zone, we have two videos, uh, focusing on the benefits of the Enterprise Zone Incentive Program, um, as well as how to fill out forms and, and the process, process to apply. Um, we're also working with the Health Department to do a Food One-on-One, which should be available very soon. Um, that was delayed due to some health issues, um, with some of the staff, so, um, but we'll, we'll have that soon. Um, we also are, a- a- as we speak, um, there's two facilitators that are training on the Fast Track Training Program, and, um, they're going to be, um, training on this, uh, providing training for existing and aspiring entrepreneurs, uh, in both English and Spanish. Um, we also applied for a, a community foundation grant that will help us deliver that training. Um, this, uh, year, we've also been, uh, investing in marketing, which is like, was one of the things, was geofencing. Um, this will cut our costs for some of the travel, um, and we've, uh, geofenced three national conferences, and which resulted in an increase in our website activity from a hundred and eleven percent to four-hundred-and-sixty-six percent, and over thirty-five countries, um, were, uh, being drawn in, uh, from those, the, the geofencing activity. We also, um, engaged in some e-communications through our Growing Together in Boone County and Focus. Um, those, we obtained twenty-one hundred monthly contacts as a result. Um, we're also working with the school district, and a few, uh, about a year ago or more, we uh, started participating in a sixty-by-twenty-five community. It's now called the Illinois Education and Careers, uh, Career Success Network. And through this, we've had six internships in manufacturing, two of which those students had been hired. Um, we've had thirteen, um, certified nursing assistants, uh, trained. We have currently sixty students that are currently in welding, um, they s- they just started their class, and these are all kids that are in school. We also received this, what they call the Stamp Grant through the Illinois Manufacturing Association, and that will allow us to train ten internship, internships, uh, in manufacturing over the next couple of years. We're also, um, helping plan the Manufacturing Day, um, which will be October thirteenth, um, and it'll be at the Rock Valley College Technology Center. Um, there's, uh, anticipated two-hundred-and-fifty students from the region that will be attending. Uh, unfortunately, uh, Belvidere students cannot attend due to the, um, uh, restrictions for COVID, they don't, they are not able to go off-site for, uh, visits. Um, but we hope that we're going to engage them on other activities once that is, um, opened up, and once their board approves that. But currently, we'll, we will have North Boone students. Um, I think that's all. If there's any questions, Mayor?
I thought the President told us COVID was no longer in existence, it was over.
That's what I thought, too.
I did, too.
We're on to the next one.
All right. Uh, anybody have any questions for Pam? All right, thank you Pam.
Thank you, and thanks for your time.
Appreciate it. All right, and, uh, with us tonight is Mindy Long from Ida Public Library. Mindy, welcome. And for those of you, uh, that got a chance to go through, Mindy had the, uh, book bus brought up here, and, um, so, I did get, I did get a chance to go through it.
Thanks for, thanks for doing it.
Very nice, yeah.
Good. It's a fun, it's a very fun thing for the community. So I don't have a lot to talk about today, uh, President is lying about COVID, I just got over COVID, I had it two weeks ago, so, again, once again, I had COVID. So, uh, it wasn't that bad, though. Anyway, um, the library itself, we're doing very well, we're averaging about twelve thousand visits per month between the upstairs and downstairs in the library and the bookmobile, which is a lot of people, so, we're very busy. Um, the bookmobile, excuse me, is going out to schools and daycare centers. Um, we visit, we visit Caledonian Elementary now, twice a week. We signed up over two-hundred of their four-hundred students enrolled for library cards, for the new, uh, no-fee cards, which is a lot of kids. So, we're working on getting out to the other county schools also. Um, we're visiting Lincoln Elementary, we're going out to the high school now for special than, special needs kids, so, we're kind of busy traveling, Tracy's busy traveling everywhere, she's the driver, the only driver we have right now. Um, so we're doing very well with the bookmobile. Um, we have signed up, in August, we signed up two-hundred-and-twenty-seven children for those cards, and we're set to break that record, because we're already over three-hundred for September, which is great, because September is library card signup month. I don't think we'll get a prize, but the prize is the reward we get from the kids reading and educating our community. Um, we have some programs coming up that are pretty cool, we have a blanket fort night again this Friday night at seven-thirty, if you want to register. You come in, you build a blanket for it, you read by flashlight, it's really fun, everyone loved it last time, so, it'll be pretty cool. We have another ghost hunt coming up, whether or not you believe in ghosts, it's going to be fun, it's at night, um, and believe it or not, the local UAW twelve-sixty-eight has a paranormal committee who is conducting the ghost hunt, so they will be there conducting the ghost hunt. Information is on the website, there is an admission fee for it, um, but it should be fun. Uh, homeschool hub is set up by the elevator for homeschool parents, it's kind of a swap of homeschool curriculums and programs, so you can come in if you're a home schooler and change, exchange curriculums and see what else is in the, in the little bins there. And we have a homeschool meeting for parents only, the first Monday of every month at six o'clock, so that homeschool parents can get a chance to get away from the kids, get away from the house, and talk to other people that they, um, can associate with about how hard it is to be a homeschool parent. Uh, tomorrow is voter registration day, we are partnered with Vote Now, and so you can come to the library and register to vote, we have a computer set aside, we have bilingual assistants available, if you're not registered to vote, come onto the library and get registered. Um, this is banned books week this week, we don't technically like to call it banned books, because really, you can't really, it's not illegal to read a book, it's not illegal to, uh, have a book in a library, Chief Woody's not going to come and arrest you for having a book, but they still call it banned books. So we're featuring a different, sort of a banned book every week on Facebook, the one featured yesterday was Lord of the Rings, which was banned back in the day, uh, hard to believe, but it was. So keep watching Facebook, there's some really interesting books that have been banned in the past, so, hard to believe. Um, we just received the wonderful Illinois Centennial Award for our library, in February, we will be one-hundred-and-ten years old. We received an Illinois Centennial Award, and we are now recognized as an Illinois Centennial Library, who has contributed to over one-hundred years of service to the enrichment of Illinois citizens, so it's kind of neat. We will be having a special open house in February, on February, I think it's February ninth, we're going to have the open house, uh, our anniversary is February twelfth of eighteen eighty-three, so we'd be a hundred-and-ten years old. So we will have an open house, everyone will be invited, and the board's planning a lot of activities, so. I think that's it, I don't really have anything else major going on, just if you don't have a library card, come on in and get a library card, see what you're missing.
Okay. Any questions? Anybody have any questions for Mindy? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having me.
Nice to see you.
Thanks.
All right, uh, we'll move along here to item seven, approval of expenditures, uh, first we have general and special fund expenditures in the amount of four million, two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, nine-hundred-and-twelve dollars and thirty-three cents. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Prather. Uh, questions? Alderman Snow?
Just out of curiosity, do we want to make an understanding that, um, Mr. Burton's not, um, voting on the, uh, page thirty-five at the top for the facade?
Yeah, he beat me to it, I'm aware of that, yeah.
Oh, okay, I just, I just have this done a lot of times, I just wanted to.
Thanks for, thanks for, yep.
Okay. Okay. Any, uh, Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions, but as I said before, I have a constituent that always wants to know what the big, um, item amounts are, when it comes to big amounts for the month, and so Shannon wrote them out for me, made it easier. So I'm going to just, um, say for the air, um, what they were, there are six of them, uh, police pension, the fire pension, which is two times a year, capital funds for the projects, uh, that would be with, uh, Brent, primary clarify improvements in the Southwest Tank Rehab, um, and the Boone County Conservation District, so those are the six items, I just want to make sure I mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, uh, then we have a motion on the second to approve general and special fund expenditures in the amount of four million, two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, nine-hundred-and-twelve dollars and thirty-three cents. All those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Burton?
Abstain.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman? Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Six in favor?
Okay, motion passed, thank you. And with item seven, along with, uh, general and special fund, we have water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of five-hundred-and-six-thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars and ten cents. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any discussion regarding that motion at second on the floor? Any questions? Now's the chance. All right, hearing none, uh, all those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item eight, uh, for the record, I, um, items A through G have been placed on file at the clerk's office. Uh, we have item H, minutes of the Committee of the Whole Building Plan and Zoning and Public Works, dated, uh, September twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Could I have a motion to that effect, please, for those to pass them? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion, any corrections, any issues with those, with that motion, those minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And we have, uh, under item nine, unfinished business, we have, uh, for a second reading, ordinance number five ninety-eight out, H, and ordinance amending section one-ten-dash-nine-one, uh, for stop signs, uh, within the city of Bel- Belvidere Municipal Code, add, at the intersection of West Harrison Street and Ruby Street as a four-way stop. Uh, motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Thank you. Any questions, any comments regarding that motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none, uh, all those in favor, well, when, well, when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And, uh, under item ten, new business, we have ordinance five ninety-nine H for first reading tonight, we'll be back to you. That ordinance is an ordinance, uh, providing for transfer of a portion of Genoa Road from the Boone County Highway System to the city of Belvidere Highway System, and, um, that is for first reading only. We have, um, item B, resolution twenty, twenty-two dash nineteen, resolution approving the Boone County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, uh, twenty-twenty-two update, which was what we had discussed, the nice thick plan that the gentleman had left us. Uh, could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter. Any questions, uh, any comments regarding that? Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one quick question, is it going to be updated, um, after it's, um, passed?
Well, I believe it will, I mean, uh, you know, some of the names that was pointed out were not, uh, right, but I think the plan itself was the meat and potatoes of it, um, but, uh, I, uh, anticipate that that will be done, yes.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the names, is all, thank you.
Yep, mm-hmm, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion, uh, on the floor then, and a second, uh, to approve resolution twenty-twenty-two dash nineteen, a resolution approving the Boone County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan twenty-twenty-two update, uh, all those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And moving on to motions forwarded from Committee of the Whole Building Plan and Zoning and Public Works of September twelfth, twenty twenty-two, motions of planning zoning, uh, Chair, Chairman Porter.
A, uh, motion to approve the special use extension for twenty-sixty-one through twenty-one-fifteen North State Street.
Okay, um, motion out of committee, um, anybody have any questions regarding that? Gina, that was for the strip mall up on North State, and I think there was a myriad of issues that, uh, prevented, that, uh, asked them to apply for this extension, is that right?
Correct, this is the strip mall that is going where the two houses were, next to the ultimate car wash. Um, the special use was for the drive-through lane and, uh, potential video gaming in that strip mall. Uh, he's had issues with, um, some overextension of financing and architectural services, but he is hoping to, he has the overextension issues resolved, and now he's working with his architect.
Alderman Snow?
And I happened to ride by that today, and I noticed there's a big for sale sign out there, so what's the logistics, or do you know, or does it really?
Until he put it for sale when he was working on his finances, those have been, uh, resolved. He, he had some rental property that he recently sold, so, um, that has cleared up his financing, and, um, the other part I don't want to say.
I'm assuming it doesn't really affect our decision one way or the other, or shouldn't have any bearing?
No, he, it is for sale, but he is not actively trying to sell it, if that makes sense.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions, uh, regarding the motion on the floor? All right, thank you Gina, um, all those in favor, well, when their name is called, uh, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Thank you. And motions of public, out of Public Works, uh, Chairman Snow?
Thank you, Your Honor. B, motion to approve the proposal from T R C for the twenty-twenty-two landfill number two, annual service agreement, in an estimated amount of fifty-five-thousand, seven-hundred dollars. The cost of this work to be shared equally with the county and included in the landfill budget, account number zero-one-dash-five-dash-three-three-five-dash-seven-nine-zero-zero.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee, any questions, any comments, any concerns? All right, uh, seeing none, all those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Okay, continue, please.
C, motion to approve the work order with Baxter and Woodman, in the amount not to exceed twenty-thousand dollars to complete the wastewater treatment plant pre-treatment, local limits evaluation. This work to be paid out of line item number six-one-dash-five-dash-eight-two-zero-dash-six-one-nine-zero.
Okay, that motion being out of committee, do we have any comments, any questions regarding that motion? All right, hearing none, uh, all those in favor, will answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Item D, please.
D, motion to approve the work order from Baxter, Woodman, in the amount not to exceed twelve-thousand dollars to prepare the N P D E S permit renewal application and reviewing the draft permit. This work to be paid from, from line item number six-one-dash-five-dash-eight-two-zero-dash-six-one-nine-zero.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee, is there any questions? Is there any questions regarding that motion out of committee? Right, hearing none, all those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk, clerk calls a roll, please.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Continue, please.
E, motion to approve the proposal from Hampton, Lenzini, and Renzek, in the amount of twelve-thousand dollars to complete the planning and design grant application for the Appleton Road grade separation project. This work to be paid from, from line item number forty-one-dash-five-dash-one-one-zero-dash-eight-zero-two-five.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee, is there any questions, uh, regarding that? All right, hearing none, uh, all those in favor, will answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Item D, please.
D, motion to approve the work order from Baxter, Woodman, in the amount not to exceed twelve-thousand dollars to prepare the N P D E S permit renewal application and reviewing the draft permit. This work to be paid from, from line item number six-one-dash-five-dash-eight-two-zero-dash-six-one-nine-zero.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee, is there any questions? Is there any questions regarding that motion out of committee? Right, hearing none, uh, all those in favor, will answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And under item eleven, uh, we have, uh, can I get a motion to go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining matters pursuant to section two, C two of the Open Meetings Act? And I would like, uh, both, uh, Police Chief Woody and, uh, Fire Chief Shadle, if they could be available, please, included in that. Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Flurry. Any, all right, uh, all those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls that roll.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Okay. Take a couple of minutes here.